Press that button at the bottom. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, how about now? All right. Hello, committee. My name is Autumn Ness. Thank you so much for having me and giving me some time to explain. I'm here to present and talk to you guys a little bit about what is possible, if and when this bill passes, because there is so much more possible than what we are currently doing. Like she said, I am the Hawaii Organic Land Management Program Director for Beyond Pesticides. I'm based on Maui, but I work all over the state with various local governments, agencies, the school board, private resorts and golf courses, a lot of different large-scale entities that are trying to move away from this stuff. And it's working. There's a lot that's possible, and that's what I want to tell you about. Really quickly, I submitted a 14-page written testimony from Beyond Pesticides that's full of citations and the scientific literature that I will not go over now, but please refer to that if you have questions. In summary, I will just say that of the 30 most commonly-used lawn care pesticides, 16 are linked directly to cancer, 17 are hormone disruptors, 21 are reproductive toxicants, 12 are linked to birth defects, 14 are neurotoxic, and 25 cause kidney and liver effects. I will leave the rest for you to look for yourself. On the back of this written testimony, there is a table of the 30 most commonly-used lawn pesticides, and there's another table about 30 commonly-used pesticides in general that go into more detail, and there are scientific citations on there. Beyond Pesticides has been around since 1981. Do you have it? Oh, there's one that was submitted with all of the written testimony to council. Oh, okay. So in the back, you'll find the table. So Beyond Pesticides has been around since 1981, but just recently, we opened a Hawaii-specific program because the movement around the state is so fast and furious, and we live in a unique place. So we put some resources to Hawaii specifically to help push this whole thing forward. The last thing I'll say is that in addition to the health problems, we are in a cascading environmental crises. And I think you are all in some way, shape, or form aware. Alone, I will just talk about the honeybee decline. We are losing our honeybee population across the U.S., and Hawaii is not immune to this statistic at 30%, give or take, per year. So we are in trouble. I will leave you with those facts. Okay. So for the purposes of this presentation, sometimes I'm going to use the word pesticide, and sometimes I'm going to use the word herbicide. In general, weed qualifies as a pest. So pesticides also include herbicides as an umbrella topic. Some of the science and recommendations I'm going to make include all pesticides. Some of them are herbicide-specific, so please bear with me as I interchange, but know that that's done intentionally. I know that your bill talks about herbicide reduction, and that's great, too. Let's see. So where are you guys in this whole scheme right now? In Hawaii, there has been some really watershed changes made to the conversation around pesticides and their regulation. Two years ago, I was part of the team in the state of Hawaii at the legislature that banned the use of chlorpyrifos in our state. The state of Hawaii was the first state to do so, and California and Nevada quickly followed suit. And now there is a bill going through Congress at the federal level to ban chlorpyrifos. We were all waiting around for the EPA to do so because the science against chlorpyrifos is so clear. But the EPA, under this current administration, brushed it under the rug, so Hawaii was the first state to act. And I've worked at the ledge for a long time, and I've never seen the legislators so cohesive around one topic. Passing the chlorpyrifos ban was very easy comparatively because the science is just so clear. And like I said, our action allowed California and New York, and the feds are going to follow suit. In 2016, I was working for Councilmember Cochran for the Maui County Council as her legislative adviser, and we were getting calls from citizens around Maui that were concerned about spraying in their parks, much like what's happening today. The ones that really hit home for us were the ones from the parents who have children with already pre-existing autoimmune disorders or cancers or ADHD or autism that couldn't use the county parks because they didn't know when or what they were being sprayed with. And if you have a child that is already at risk, those things are alarming. So we contacted Beyond Pesticides. Beyond Pesticides came to Maui, trained our Maui Parks staff, and we made four pesticide-free parks as a pilot program. They are still pesticide-free today. They taught them how to manage those landscapes differently in a way that doesn't use, not only pesticides or herbicides, but not even chemical fertilizers anymore. So we are about to expand that program countywide. Our Parks Department has committed to going 100%. And our Public Works Department, actually, who manages the highways, has decreased their use of pesticides and herbicides by 90% over the last few years. Maui County Council is about to hear a bill that's similar to yours codifying that. Let's see. The Board of Education, you might have heard. In June of this year, we brought Lee Johnson to meet with some of your members and some of the administration. Lee Johnson is the first man to win the lawsuit, a lawsuit against Monsanto, proving in a judicial forum that his non-Hodgkin's lymphoma is directly related to his use of Roundup at work. He came here and talked to various agencies. He talked to the Board of Education, and his story is so compelling. He was actually a school groundskeeper when he got sick, ironically. His story was so compelling that in something I've never seen before, the state superintendent of schools and the president of the Board of Education issued a memo the very following day, less than 12 hours after the meeting convened, that clarified that there is to be no herbicide use, period. Not just Roundup. No herbicide use, period, on any public school grounds in the state of Hawaii. And if there is any stock of herbicide on campus, they should be disposed of immediately because the evidence is so compelling. Also, last thing. On Kauai, they're also doing something where they're going to convert all of their parks and roadways to pesticide-free spaces, but they're not doing so through legislation. They're doing so by mayoral directive. So you guys are not alone in this conversation, is the point that I'm trying to make, which is good because it means that you have help and resources along the way. Let's see. So going to this presentation. Do I just push this thing? Okay. I won't bore you with all the details, but the most glaring thing here about the science is that the American Academy of Pediatrics has issued a statement, this is six years ago now, urging local bodies to reduce exposure to children because the science is that clear. Pesticides and kids do not mix. The only people that are disputing this, incidentally, are the chemical companies and their funded studies. Other than that, nobody is disputing the fact that pesticides and kids do not mix, and we need to do everything we can to prevent them from being exposed. Oh, I will say one thing. All of the attention is on Roundup right now. Roundup is the thing that's in the media. But I do not focus only on Roundup because Roundup is the next bad actor in a long line, on a treadmill of bad actors. And we can't keep using all of our time and resources banning or moving away from one chemical and then getting attached to the next one, who actually sometimes is more lethal. And then on that treadmill, we just need to talk about a systems change, which is what I'm getting to. Let's see. I pulled this one study out because this was a study done in Hilo. I talked to a lot of the uncles that spend time fishing and gathering at the beach. I'm on Maui, so I'm a South Maui girl in Kihei. South Maui used to be really well-known for its limu and seagrasses, and there isn't any anymore. And the uncles are always asking me, "What happened to the limu? Does it have anything to do with the resorts and the golf course spraying herbicides?" Well, maybe, but I didn't know. So we found this study that was done in Hilo specifically, talking about how the use of Aqua Pro showed negative effects to the macroalgae and seagrasses in the bay. Ironically, Aqua Pro is a glyphosate-based product that is licensed and certified for use in marine environments. So that's interesting. A lot of these things we're talking about are federally regulated, but the feds are asleep at the wheel right now. And I've just given you a few examples of how they're asleep at the wheel. But the last one I'll talk about is that... Are you familiar with a class of pesticides called neonicotinoids? It's an insecticide that really affects bees. The EPA registered them... The Hawaii Center for Food Safety had to go to court for years representing beekeepers, for years, to finally get the EPA to recognize that neonyx are really dangerous to our bee population. And just maybe two months ago, that lawsuit was won, and they pulled the registration for 12 different products. But that didn't come through federal regulation. It came through legislation. So you've heard about the liability concerns. The one thing I'll add to that is that plausible deniability is no longer an option. We've had three cases in both state and federal courts that have tied in the judicial realm the use of Roundup specifically to non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and specifically said that the company that made that chemical knew about its danger while they were marketing it. This is not an anomaly. This is, like I said, the one that's in the headlines now. When this one is done, something else will be the new Roundup. At this point, they're suing the manufacturers. But eventually, if someone is required to use this product as part of their job, the employer is going to be liable soon. So I will just leave you with that. Okay. So let's talk about how to move forward. Beyond Pesticides is an organization. It's been around for a long time, and we are not about blame. We're not about talking about what we've been doing wrong up until now. We're about how do we fix it. We focus on education. We focus on creative problem solving. We focus on really addressing the specific needs of a community because every community's needs is different. We assist in policy, which is what we're doing right now. And we also assist in just the transition of practices. We work in a lot of communities that I won't read down to you in the interest of time. I highlighted Maui because that was our first Hawaii project. That is successful. None of this has been easy, I will tell you, but it has been successful, and that's really, really important. Kauai County is also going to be on board. Beyond Pesticides trainers are coming back in February of next year, and we are hoping to bring them to all of the islands to train all of the island's parks departments. Maui is going to get a refresher, and we're going to include the resort and golf course managers. So that's really exciting. So I hope that you'll be on that list in February. Okay. So what does that look like? We come in and we do some soil testing. And the reason we do this is because the entire way that we're talking about managing landscapes, whether it's parks or roadways, is from a bottom-up approach. Right now, we are all top-downing. We see a weed, we spray it. We see some brown grass, we dump some fertilizer on it. It's all top-down. If you ask my grandpa, who is a farmer from a long time ago, he will tell you if he sees a stand of weeds in a certain area of his farm, he knows what the soil under that is doing. And he knows that those weeds are a symptom. So we have to fix the soil and then plant things that are going to choke out those weeds. Right now, we're not doing that. We're just killing the weeds, right? So the Beyond Pesticides approach is a completely bottom-up approach. What's going on? What does it mean for our soil and our landscapes? And how do we make the whole ecosystem better so this problem doesn't exist anymore? A lot of people ask us, "Okay, we want the Cliff Notes. What's the organic substitute for Roundup?" Or, "Okay, I got five minutes to change my entire way I manage all my county parks. What do I spray instead of Speed Zone?" There is no answer for that. And the reason is because these chemicals are that toxic, and they're that dangerous, and they're not indiscriminate of their killing, and they're really cheap because they're made out of petroleum products. There is no silver bullet for those things. There is no organic Roundup. There is no organic anything that's going to kill everything in its path for pennies on the dollar. It's just not going to happen. So that's what makes this a little bit difficult because we have to rethink how we look at our landscapes. The good news is is that once we figure out how to look at our landscapes, we realize that the way that we rehabilitate these landscapes doesn't cost a lot of money. It just costs a bit of tuning in the way we think, you know? We used to know how to do all this stuff 50 years ago, you know? I think it was Mr. Cohen... No, Mr. Watson, that talked about the man who mowed from point A to point B, and he started planting natives to make his job easier. That was common knowledge a long time ago. Not even that long ago, actually. But because these companies have given us a really cheap and easy product, we kind of forgot how to do all that. So in the state of Hawaii, through all the counties, we are in this collective remembering process, just relearning what we used to know. And it's actually not that difficult. Okay. So what does it look like? On Maui, the trainers came in, they tested the soil of the four parks, and found that in... I'm oversimplifying right now, but in two of the four parks, the sand content was too high. In two of the four parks, there was microbial presence. They're all the microbes that you want, but they weren't active, right? So all you need in a healthy soil is active microbes. So in a few of the parks, literally, all we did was aerate with a machine that pokes holes... If you're not familiar, it pokes holes in the turf to allow air and water to permeate the surface. We put compost, which is readily available on Maui because it has living organisms in it, and we sprayed molasses on it. Molasses is a sugar for the microbes. And within weeks, we had a healthy, functioning ecosystem where the grass was greener. We didn't have to use water-soluble nitrogen fertilizer that's going to run off into your river when it rains the next time. We created a really functioning, living ecosystem. And when that happens... Picture a baseball field, right? If you talk to any turf guy, the most problematic places for when the turf gets unhealthy and weeds grow is like where the pitcher stands and around the bases because they get compacted, right? So all you have to do is aerate and uncompact that soil, keep it healthy, keep the soil fed, and your turf grows so thick around the bases that there's no room for nutgrass to grow, you know? There is some nutgrass every once in a while, and then you just pull it up with your finger, you know? It's like you don't have to spray the entire field for a few things of nutgrass. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's a real restructuring of how we manage landscapes like that. I'll say this now, and then I'll get to details in a minute. Parks and Public Works is a very, very different animal when you're talking about landscaped areas, which your parks are, and when you're talking about Public Works, which is, you know, hundreds, maybe 1,000 miles is what I heard of roadway. That's a different conversation, and I will get there. Let's see. If you look at this... This is what the Maui training looked like. They came and we... They did all four... We have four districts for our parks. They did a training for all four districts. They were site-specific. They talked about what does good soil look like and what does dead soil look like? The basics, you know? And this is stuff that our guys didn't know in the beginning. They, after they came here and talked to the guys about what their current practices are versus what their expectations are, they did a step-by-step turf report, which was kind of like a recipe book for each park. An "on schedule", instead of using this product, use this product at this time. This is where you can get it. This is how much it costs. Instead of mowing two inches up, mow one inch up. Various things like this. They did a training for the parks, I mean, for the resorts and golf courses, the first time while they were there, too. We even did a pilot, which you guys did here, a goat-eating-weeds pilot. If you look in this one slide... I picked this one because it's interesting. It's showing the guys in the background. The photo on the slide is the difference between organic soil and compacted, dead soil. And the reason this is interesting for our parks and our resorts guys is because organic soil also holds irrigation better. You don't have to irrigate it and use as much water. And in storm events, it absorbs more water instead of making really quick and fast runoff events. So, side note. When the trainers went home, the assistance from Beyond Pesticides did not stop there. There was a lot of... The trainers trained the parks guys, and then they went home, and the parks guys were like, "Oh, my God, what did I just learn?" It's like sitting through a university class, and then you go home and you're supposed to apply it, right? So I and a gentleman named Dwayne Sparkman stayed behind. We were on Maui, and we fielded the phone calls from the parks guy going to his catalog of the company that they order products from, and the products they need are not on that list. So we helped. We got in touch with Simplot and made sure that they could find the products. You know, I know that the parks guys don't have time to do that kind of stuff because they're already maxed out. I do. That's my job. So, stuff like that. We get a call from the Little League team who was playing on one of the fields who was not on the pesticide-free parks pilot list. The parks guys had sprayed it, and some of the littles that were waiting for their brothers or sisters who were playing were rolling around in the grass and got full-body hives or reaction or rashes or something. And we found out that, yes, that morning, the park had been sprayed. So instead of making a big "let's complain about it" situation, we went down there with weeding hand tools and nabbed the parents who were waiting for their kids during practice and showed them, "Hey, these are the kind of weeds that bring the parks department sprayers down here. So if you guys want to learn what to pull so that you get rid of the reason the parks guys are spraying in the first place, let's do that." So now the Little League team weeds its own fields. And we're talking about making that a requirement for when teams use county parks that they have their kids weed. What a concept! And then they have some pride about the field that they're playing on. So that's all part of the support that the organization provides. Like I said, I'm not going to say that any of this is easy because there have been a lot of hiccups along the way. There have been things that don't work in certain environments, and we've had to learn that this works in a dry area of the island, and it doesn't work in a wet area of the island. But we've moved through those hiccups. And the parks are still pesticide-free, and the parks department wants to expand. So for me, that's a win. Let's see. We weathered things like an election and the entire leadership of all of the departments changing, and we're still going. So we're still here, is my thing, and we wanted to help you guys to succeed in whatever way you can. Before I go to this part, I want to talk about the Public Works part because that was really turf and parks-heavy. The Public Works challenge for managing roadways... I do not envy them because, like I said, I think on Big Island, it's 1,000 miles of highway or roadway is what they told me. We've been working with our Maui Public Works on completely different ways of looking at roadside management. The first thing we did is we took these stretches of highway. And back in the day, they would put their guys in the Roundup truck and start at the airport and drive along on a highway and spray everything that wasn't, you know, a storefront or that didn't have a "no spray" sign. That's what they did for a long, long time. And the DOT... This is a state guy, actually. The DOT supervisor at the time said, "This is not working. We're getting complaints right and left. So let's really sit down and look at how much of this highway we need to actually be spraying." And it turned out that probably 20% was actually problematic. The other 80, they were just spraying because they had Roundup in the truck, you know? No, no, no shame. Just, that's reality. So the guy said, "Okay. From now on, you're only going to spray this 20%." And that really brings that job into a manageable level. Now you have a handful of area that you need to maintain instead of, you know, 1,000 miles. So then they started doing things like weed eating. They invested in one of those GoGoGadget mower machines where it's actually, it's a vehicle, and it has, it looks like a shaver with an elbow. And it jets out, and it shaves even the things that you couldn't spray or weed whack before because the reach is so mobile. The guys took a minute to figure out... It's like playing a video game, like a joystick. They had to figure out how to use it. But now, not only does it cut the hard-to-reach places, but it drops mulch that actually goes back into the soil. So it's feeding a good, healthy ecosystem. And the upside to that is that our own DOT guys said that once they left the root system and the microbial system of the weeds in the soil, when we had big rain events, runoff events, making brown water into our ocean and rock fall, which is a big problem in our rural areas of Maui especially, were not an issue anymore because the roots were holding the rock in the soil in place. So that was an actual benefit of not spraying that they found out kind of afterwards. The last few things we're working on, barrier solutions like weed mats. You can Google them, and you see all these different shapes. They create these roll-out weed mats, and some of them go around a telephone pole or they go around the posts for guardrails. They're made specifically to choke out weeds. And once you put them down, they're there. Our Maui guys put them down. They said they were a little bit awkward to attach around the posts of the guardrails, but once they're there, five, six years, you never have to go back again. We even had that big Central Maui fire, and the fire ripped through the area where they just put the weed mats down, and they were fireproof. So, yeah, they're there. Things like that. Things like mulching. We're taking our invasive species from upcountry, the eucalyptus and the ironwoods, and we're turning them into mulch and mulching the areas that are really weed-heavy, which, again, is going to feed the soil and is going to choke out weeds. So we're doing things like replanting with natives. I'm working with native plant specialists who recommend aali'i because it's a... If you're familiar with it, you noted that it recharges our aquifer. It creates a canopy that we can start planting lower-lying native plants underneath that. But what a beautiful thing if some of our roadways became native plant and pollinator corridors in the future. So let's see if I forgot anything. Before I go into the what's required of you, let me see if I have anything else I wanted to say. Yeah, I want to really reiterate. It's not this... Beyond Pesticides is going to train your park staff and your public work staff, and poof, this problem is over. It is very much not that. It is a collective learning. It's a collective, creative problem solving. It's a troubleshooting. It's a weaning ourselves off this product. Like I said, Public Works on Maui is down 90%. They have 10% left, and we're working with them on that 10%. Mostly, it's pre-emergent stuff, when they are going to go fill cracks or when they're going to pave a roadway. Right now, most contracts require that you douse it with herbicides. So right now, we're using steam technology. There's a new technology. She's coming to Maui specifically to demonstrate this to our Public Works guys that instead of spraying it, we're going to steam it before they pave it. And I think that'll do it. So... And all of that will be available to you guys if you want it. So all we really need from you... This is not a sales pitch. So all we really need from you, this is not a sales pitch, it's covered by grants. I spend a lot of my time grant-writing and getting partnerships from across the country on people that want, from people that want this to happen. All we need from you guys is a commitment that you want to make this happen, that you want your departments to follow through on the recommendations that they get. And I think that is it. Final, I made two notes while I was listening to the testimony. The first thing is, I heard testimony from Ms. Kay from the Big Island Invasive Species Committee. Beautiful, great points. I think having a member on the advisory committee that is trained in weed science is a great idea. I do want to let you know, just as food for thought, that in a lot of university weed science programs, 100% of their education is funded by the chemical companies. I know one person who has been through a weed science program at university that has not been sponsored either by a chem company grant or scholarship. So it would be great if you could find that one person, someone who knows actually how to manage weeds through land management instead of chemical application. And the last thing I'll say is, I just came back from Washington DC from doing a couple of days on Capitol Hill, talking about these kinds of issues and how opportunities, when we decrease pesticide use and decrease chemical fertilizer use, we are actually creating opportunities for our pollinators and for carbon sequestration, and that is a really, really big deal. I mention it now because I hear you guys talking about it. Just now, it's starting to sink in on the federal level with Congress that organic soil sequesters carbon, and it sequesters carbon quickly and cheaply. So if we're looking for, our hair is on fire, we need to find ways to suck carbon out of the atmosphere while we're also figuring out how to not keep dumping more in. Dollar for dollar, building organic soil carbon sequestration zones in your community is the fastest and cheapest way to do it. So in this current situation on Capitol Hill, when everyone is functioning under this weird administration, that's the way that they're going right now, and they're begging local communities to do the same because they only have so much power right now federally under this current situation. They literally begged me in almost every single meeting, go home and find ways in your state and in your communities to build these carbon sequestration zones so that when things do change in DC, we have demonstrable data and evidence that it's thus easy and that it works. Okay, I just talked a lot. Please let me know if you have any questions about any of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for flying here and talking to us and sharing your experience and giving us the courage to go ahead and join with other counties and even in our state, other counties that are getting on board to find better ways to control weeds without using harmful herbicides, and I'm really happy to be supportive of this. Thank you, Rebecca.